We are live streaming this meeting on youtube.com/towncamdenmaine. Or if you wish to participate by Zoom, go to our website and click on the Zoom link. That's in the agenda packet. So our first order of business would be public comment on non-agenda items. Do I see anybody here to speak on a non-agenda item? I do not. So we'll move on to approval of the board minutes from July 22, which was our last meeting. Does anyone have any additions, deletions, corrections?
Yeah, it didn't have. I had asked in my select board report four particular questions that I don't see referenced in the in the piece. In fact, there's nothing in there under Nolan. So I had asked, why was the settlement concerning 39 Main Street not included? I had also asked, when is the final order issued? I'd also asked, what date was it that we were not to do our individual research? And that was clarified that it was February 2025. And was there any documentation not provided to the select board relevant to the proceedings? I'd asked those four questions. Those are not reflected in the minutes.
Okay.
That's an omission that should be in there.
Okay. Noted, so noted. And that was under the discussion.
Nope, that was under select board reports.
Okay, great.
Each person has a thing.
Uh huh.
Nolan does not.
I'm looking right at it. All right. Any other corrections? Additions, deletions?
A move that we approve as amended.
One second. Any further discussion?
How do we ensure those amendments get into the final minutes?
It's in the recording. I would assume that it will be included.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Great, thank you. So our consent agenda includes two items. The first is a request for the annual block party on August 29 from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Maple Street. And the second is the consideration of renewal of victular and lodging licenses for Blue Harbor House, Captain Swift Inn, Elms of Camden, Lucky Betty's, and Scott's Place. And if there are no issues regarding any of those, the recommendation is that we adopt the consent agenda. And there we go. All right. All set. Thank you, Deva. So we'll move on to public hearings regarding. We have three different establishments that require a public hearing. So we will first hear from the applicant and then we will see comments from any other persons wishing to comment or ask questions. So we'll start with the Captain Swift Inn. And if you would like to come and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your venture, we'd be delighted to hear from you. Come up to the podium and introduce yourself and we'll go from there.
Are you going to speak?
I'm not.
I am Jessica Gilman. This is my family, Matt Gilman, my husband, and my seven-year-old, our seven-year-old twins, George and Stella Gilman. They'll be in second grade at Crest. We are acquiring the Captain Swift Inn. We're moving up here from Cape Elizabeth, which we're very excited about. We close on the property tomorrow at 11:30. And our intention for the rest of this season and beyond is to continue to operate it in a first-class manner and become great members of the community. And yeah, what am I missing? We're very excited to assume ownership and, you know, sink our teeth into all the moving parts of the business. My background, I went to the Cornell Hotel School, so I have a background in hotel and restaurant management. I had a restaurant in New York City for almost six years, closed it during COVID. So I do have experience in hospitality. And this is my, our first ownership of a hotel, a small hotel. So we're very excited and we're really excited to be here in Camden.
Great.
Welcome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is there anyone? Obviously, you're speaking in favor.
No.
And if anyone wishes to speak against this license, I don't see anyone present who might be likely to do that. I'll turn it over to the board for discussion, any discussion. The applications appear to be all in order, signed by the police chief, filled out in order. So I will entertain a motion.
I was just going to ask, you don't anticipate any major changes? You're going to run it pretty much as before?
So the plan is to absolutely run it as before through this season. We are contemplating, and I've spoken with Clint about this and actually Chris Farley as well, we are contemplating, we're going to be living in the owner's residence immediately and probably for at least a year. But our hope is that we will then move into a home in Camden or Rockport and convert the owner's residence to some additional guest rooms. So we're hoping to get maybe four more guest rooms out of the space. So go from nine to 13 rooms. We've already been researching parking requirements that would be associated with that. Clint and Chris have been super helpful. And I'm working with Bill Lane at Gartley and Dorsky as well. I believe we're going to be in front of the planning board, Bill tells me in a couple of weeks, to talk about, you know, the requirements, just to make sure that everything is okay before we hire architects and start figuring that piece out. But for the immediate future, we are very much living on site and operating the as-is.
Great, thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
I think one thing that you need to know is that you will be required to join the planning board.
I was like, okay. Be careful, I have a history of getting involved.
It sounds like you're almost, you're halfway there.
Yeah, exactly.
We are looking for members for the planning board.
Under the budget committee.
We'll give you a little bit, so we'll let you get settled.
Okay, excellent, perfect.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone, thank you.
All right, may I have a motion to approve the application of Captain Swift House?
Yes, I will, so moved.
And second, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Brilliant, okay, thank you. The second is for Lucky Betty's. Deva was just here, but she left. Same process, there's no one here speaking for or against, but the application all appears to be in order. If anyone has anything they'd like to say, I'll turn it to the board if there's anything related to that application.
Such a lovely part of Camden.
I know.
Every time I drive by, it looks even nicer.
I know, she's.
Very cheery last night.
You went last night?
No, I just, as I'm back. I went by and the lights were on, you know, it's cheery.
No, it is. I went the other way. I went to, I went to Eight Bells.
Oh, did you actually do that?
Yes, I did.
I got home and I was like, oh.
Stand me up. So that application also appears to be in order with no issues, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay, and any further discussion? Oh, we need a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, and the third is for Winona's, which is that sweet little restaurant that is only open two nights a week. And same, their application all appears to be in order. So I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the liquor license, beer and wine license at Winona's.
I did have to have one quick question based on this one. That, is there any set requirements for the diagram for the seating?
Yeah, I noticed. That was clearly.
Because it's like, I mean, I have no qualms with this one. I know the space, I know what they're doing. And obviously chiefs have signed off, but it's like not to any scale or any, I just don't know if there's any set guidelines for that.
Not really, and.
It's not the planning board here, so.
Yeah.
I know, I'm still wearing that hat. It's like, that's, that's really, that's what you, okay.
I know, I was trying to.
Our own invention that we do this.
Well, the state.
Right, the state.
And the state doesn't, I mean, I'm actually surprised the state doesn't want a little bit more of a.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just in terms of how many people and how many, you know, I mean, again, this one, I know, we know the space, we know, and again, the chiefs, it's renewal, it's not a new.
Right, right.
I was just surprised.
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't the crucial part, isn't it the inspection from the people, the code enforcement, all of that stuff?
Yeah. But it is based on how many people they're claiming they can seat and safely have.
Yeah, square footage. Yeah.
Yeah, if this were the only thing and it were up to us, it might not be enough, but I think the other parts of the process are.
Yeah. Are you content?
Yeah, yeah, no.
Satisfied to go ahead and make that motion?
Yeah.
Okay. And the second?
Second, or did I?
Yeah. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Okay. All right, we have handled that piece of business and we'll move on to select board reports. Who would like to start?
I can start, just a quick thing. The, the library did their Art in the Stacks fundraiser and that ended up, they made somewhere around $25,000 or $26,000, which is great. And they have a much more expensive painting that is going to be put up for sale, a Leon Kroll original oil painting. And that one, I don't know if anybody's ever seen it, up high in the, is it called the reading room of the library? But I for years have wanted to get a closer look at it. And they are having on the 12th, and like a viewing opportunity for the public before that is sold. And somebody from the Farnsworth and some, a couple of people who know a lot about Leon Kroll and art are going to be talking about the painting and the public's going to be able to see it. And so that's on the 12th from 6:00 to 7:30. And that's it for me this time.
Great, thank you. Who else got something?
Sure. Tomorrow I'll be meeting with the, well, if they're watching on YouTube, they, those who were on Zoom may now be looking at the YouTube feed to find out what happened. We're having, that's, unless you want to cancel the meeting.
No.
Because we don't have Zoom.
Can we do a fresh link? How does that?
We can, we could do a fresh link. The problem is I don't know who to send it out to other than Bill.
I mean, restarting it and only letting known users in, it's, it's an actual physical safety threat to anybody.
But it isn't, it isn't about, it isn't about the users who we're letting in, it's about that link being no longer controlled by us.
Yeah, I know a fair amount about this. I'm just saying those stakes are not, it is not a life or death situation.
Right.
Here should something go wrong.
Profoundly embarrassing.
It's embarrassing, but it's. Not sure the greater good is served by not letting people participate in that.
Right, 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 right. No.
No, absolutely.
I think you've had.
Way more.
Quite an introduction too.
Lovely and family-oriented.
Normally, we're much more G-rated.
That's never a doubt.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we are still broadcasting on YouTube, correct? So let's continue.
Very good.
Chris.
So where I was is the fireworks review kind of ad hoc committee is meeting tomorrow. It's with the fire department and police chiefs, Eric Anderson, and I, and the purpose of that is, again, to document standards related to process concerning fireworks demonstrations. And that, that'll be tomorrow at 11:00. It's just a meeting with the, with the four of us over at the Public Safety Building. Figured that was convenient to others to do that.
Great.
And I have had some questions this, this week, and I don't know what the right place to go. And that maybe, as we were discussing yesterday, when people are questioning, you know, why is the dam open for so long? Who should be the person that those are directed to?
The dam isn't open, it's leaking, but Audra.
Yep.
So the answer is it's not open, it's leaking. So the fix that was like $80,000 last year wasn't good enough. And otherwise, it's Audra. Is that correct?
There is also, if you go on the town website, there is also an app, a Crowdwater site that is updated when adjustments are made to the dam. And if it is open, it will say why and who requested it for all of the town-owned dams.
What site is that?
Crowdwater. It's.
Is that a link off of the Camden Town website?
Yes.
I just say it so that people can hear it and they would know where to go to find that direction. Because otherwise, the web is really big.
Yeah, also the Watershed Association, because they maintain remote water level sensors too. So they, if you go to their site, they have links to both their real-time water level sensors for the lake and Montgomery and as well as a link to our log, which, which details the operations changes.
So maybe it would be good to put into the minutes then what those links are so that people could have access to them.
Okay, great.
Good, maybe, good thing for the newsletter too at some point, just.
Yeah, but at least putting it in the minutes to say, hey, if we've got questions of the dam, here's the definitive source to go to.
Yeah.
That would be a good thing. Instead of just saying it's on the, I find it cumbersome to find things on the town website. I haven't found that yet. So it'd be, you know, give them the direct link, make it easy.
Great, thank you. Ken, anything to add?
No, no, thank you.
And I don't have anything specific to report except that I, to get, to just be reiterating to people that it is summer, there are kids and dogs and people on bikes and neighbors out enjoying their yards and interacting with their neighbors and that traffic is an issue and speed is an issue. And while we've got construction going on and people are being diverted other ways and choosing different routes to get to where they need to go, to really be mindful of, of what is going on on the street where you're passing through. Because we don't want anyone to be hurt. People have been hurt. And people are just feeling the impact of this additional traffic and speed. So be mindful of other people's activities that are going on in their neighborhoods and be considerate of that for the quality of life that we want to enjoy here. And now to our town manager's report.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm kind of trying to put up a news link. So you may have noticed that there are.
What about Allison?
Allison, no, I started with the library stuff. Thank you though.
There we go.
All right. So you may have noticed that there are firefighters walking in groups around the downtown area. So when they're not assigned to any of their specific task, they've been encouraged to conduct a safety patrol. And that's all within walking distance of the Public Safety Building. And actually, on several occasions when they were walking around, they were first on scene for a number of medical emergencies that have happened over the last few weeks. And they've received a lot of positive feedback about this because it was, you know, the fact that they were walking around, that they were able to stop and help people who needed medical assistance. And also after several years of coordination with Jeremy, the fire department was at the farmer's market on August 2, where they set up with Northeast Mobile Health Services personnel to talk to people at the, at the market who might have questions about the fire department or EMS services in town. So they provided information to anybody who wanted to stop and chat with them. And they had a lot of good conversations to answer questions about things like chimney cleaning and lithium-ion batteries and smoke carbon monoxide detectors, as well as just talking about the department and what they're doing and any changes. So it was, it was really positive and they're hoping to do this a couple times over the next few months while the farmer's market's still in season. On the short-term rental front, we currently have 50 owners of active short-term rental units. And active means that they're currently being advertised online as available, that haven't responded to multiple reminders to license their STRs. So so far, we've issued 118 licenses and there are about 22 that are currently waiting for inspections. So really good compliance overall. So out of the 50 that we haven't received anything for, 30 of them have gotten three reminder letters from the town already. So the next step is going to be notices of violation. And that leads to legal action by the town if we continue to not get compliance. So we're really hoping that, you know, we can, we can get those owners into compliance. If somebody isn't responding, we're asking, and the reason that they're not responding is because they're no longer renting their short-term rental. We're asking that they call the planning office and be taken off the list. And that would stop any further action. So that's the, the short-term rental front. And in some, in some kind of bittersweet news, after 23 years of service with the town, our clerk Katrina Oaks is going to be retiring on November 21 of this year. So she's hanging with us for one last election. And we're really grateful for Katrina's kind, gentle spirit. She's definitely going to be missed, but we've got months of Katrina left, so that's a nice transition to something else for her. And she's got plenty of hobbies and family to keep her busy. So everybody, if you get a chance when you're in, say congratulations to Katrina.
And thank you.
And thank you.
Yeah.
And that's it.
Great. Thank you.
So I just want to follow up on the Zoom call. If, if we expect Bill to join us interactively, it needs to be a Zoom call. So are we creating a new Zoom link? Okay, thank you.
So we've got discussion items on the agenda, but I don't see any discussion items to discuss. To discuss.
This is where we all just get to choose something to talk about, right?
What would you like to talk about? So let's keep moving because we've got a couple of folks here with particular. So if everybody's okay, we'll go on to action items. And the first one is to approve the public landing use for Windjammer Festival on August 28 through the 30. And I believe Grace is here from Parks and Rec.
Yeah, hi, everyone. I'm Grace McMullin, Assistant Director over at Parks and Rec. And yeah, you have a memo in your packet. This is the 29th year of the Camden Windjammer Festival, so it's asking to close the public landing, the same timeframe that was approved last year and years prior. We do some setup on Thursday and the festival is two days on Friday and Saturday. I'm new to the planning committee, but I've had a lot of helps. I'm super grateful for everyone who's shown me.
Recording in progress.
But yeah, just wondering if you have any questions, but I'm very excited of all the work we've put in and it's going to be a great, great time.
I just wanted to point out, and I mentioned to Grace that the, there's a lobster bake, but that's being sponsored by the West Bay Rotary, not Camden Rotary.
Yes.
And Camden Rotary does pancakes. And then West Bay, we have done a chowder challenge for years, but this year we're trying out a lobster bake, so.
And that's going to be exciting.
It's, I think it'll go well. And so just so as long as the posters reflect.
I think you got an old poster. We did catch that on the ones.
Great, 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 great. And otherwise, it's a wonderful event, so thank you. Any questions for Grace before we move to approve the request for closing the public landing?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? We're good to go.
Awesome. Well, yeah, thanks so much. And yeah, we have a list of the schedule and details up on our Parks and Rec website. I am still looking for some volunteers, so if anyone out there is interested, they can get in touch. But yeah, it's really cool how so many different organizations and businesses come together for this, so it's going to be good.
Fun, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
And now we are looking to accept the lease agreement with the Children's House Montessori School. We've had lengthy conversations about this and reading through it, it appears that all of our questions and the changes that we had asked for have been assimilated. Does anyone have, having read through it, does anyone have any ongoing questions or concerns? Anything, Audra, is there anything that you want to? I don't believe so. And your board is all good? So if everyone is satisfied that the changes have been made, I would just entertain a motion to accept the lease agreement.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Are we good? Seeing none? All those in favor? Brilliant. Yay. Thank you, Rachel. Okay, and then our last order of business is an act to award the bid for the 2025 sewer lining project.
Yes. Yes, very exciting. Much more exciting than it sounds.
I didn't know anything about it.
Yes.
Yeah, cool.
So, you know, we've talked a lot about the I and I issues that our system is experiencing, or our collection system's experiencing. And everyone knows that it's incredibly costly to replace the sewer lines if we're to, you know, dig them up and, you know, go through that whole capital project cycle. So another tool in our toolbox to address some of these issues is lining of pipes. And that's not always appropriate, we can't always do it. It really depends on the condition that they're in. So through cameraing work, we found that some of the mains on Union, Mechanic, Central, and Washington Streets, where there are a lot of problems and there's a lot of inflow and infiltration, are really good candidates for pipelining, which is a much more affordable alternative to the complete replacement like we did on Pearl Street. So it's just a really good opportunity to achieve some of our goals in a much more cost-effective manner. And so this is the, the bid to line those areas, which will help prevent collapses in a much more costly replacement project.
Can you just explain how it actually gets done?
So from what I understand, there's, there's some sort of machine that goes into the pipes and like a solution is on the inside and it hardens and then it, it creates a, like a.
A shell.
A shell in the pipe that's pretty much just as hard as the pipe itself.
The state did it in a couple places fairly recently.
Do we own the machine that does it? Or does somebody comes in, a contractor comes in and does it?
Contractor comes in, yeah. We've done it in a few areas. Like I think that the last time we did like a major pipelining, it was on Main Street in 2019, maybe, 2020, yeah, 2019, I think. So it was a while ago.
And how does this fit into the budget?
So that would be bond-funded.
This is part of that whole big push to try to fix these problems. The only thing that I kind of, I would have liked maybe just to see the document, I see the memo in the packet.
Like pictures of the.
Just like.
No, I mean, don't ask, don't offer me pictures. Yes, I would like.
Like how far down the rabbit hole are we going?
Sure, I'd watch that footage.
I'm not going to do that, although.
I meant more like a map to show the segment.
I actually wasn't even going that far, but you know, I, sure, of course, I love GIS and all that stuff, but just the bid document or something from, I get that Vortex is kind of like the big name of the game here. There's one bid, but I just like seeing the, the document that says what they're going to do for what price, not just, am I missing it? Or I think I only see, I only see a memo in there.
Right, there isn't, yeah, no bid, no bid docs.
But, I mean, and I know I should have looked at that earlier and asked for it ahead of time, but it's not going to prevent me from voting for it, but I assume they've gone. I was looking online to see maybe if I could see the.
What length of street they're doing.
Yeah, I assume it's, you know, it's, it's not just, hey, we're going to give you. Yeah, I assume that it's, you know, it's, it's not just, uh, hey, we're gonna give you five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars and see what you can get done, it's, uh, they put out bid specs that were like.
Specific stretches of road and.
Yeah, I mean, I know.
You're right, we have no visibility into what they did, and they, they're saying Union Street, Mechanic, Central, and Washington, so that could be assumptive to say it's the entire length of that road. But we, it would be nice to be able to more contextualize what it is, you know.
I assume it's just that.
Is it the whole thing from beginning of Mechanic to the end?
It's, I wouldn't. I wouldn't think so, it's gonna be the parts where they've determined that that's the treatment that makes sense and that we're not gonna have to dig it up. I know they've been doing this complex thing where they.
You may know, but the rest of the select board does not know.
Well, it says with a focus on pipes in the worst conditions, so they've ascertained through this CCTV process where this needs to be done. It's not necessarily the whole stretch of the road, but.
Is there any rule of somehow, um, how long this kind of repair lasts as opposed to building new ones?
Like fifty years.
Yeah, from what I understand, it's pretty comparable.
Anything in the fifty-year range, I'm happy to do.
What do we know, what do we know of Vortex Services? What do we have for a vendor packet on them?
Um, we've used them a lot for other projects in town. So they're, you know, they're a known quantity to us.
So this, oh, I'm sorry.
What other projects have we done with Vortex? And did they come in under budget or over budget?
I don't know, I just know they were the only bidder.
Vortex, I think more has done this, who the state has.
This sewer rehabilitation bond was, what's the language that you use? It's been awarded and we have those funds already.
Yes.
And this is being allocated.
Yeah, this is one, one project out of, um, out of many.
Yeah.
And, um, they've, they've done other, like, work to rehabilitate, I think, um, some stormwater structures pretty recently. So I believe it was Vortex that was down at, um, uh, one of, what was it? Sharpsworf, doing some work on this, the structures there. So they do.
Oh, right.
Yeah, they do stormwater structures, they do sewer, and they've done a lot of, a lot of work for us.
Right, that's on Baby Street.
Do we?
I would move to approve the department, um, recommendation and the, uh, to award the project to Vortex in the amount of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second, Chris O? Any further discussion?
Again, I'd like to see, I'd like to know, are there any other litigations against Vortex other than I'm seeing right now? I guess, how, I'd like to know some more information about the vendor that is selected as the only vendor. Where do they usually come in at? There's, there's not a lot of information to go on in this particular piece to say, uh, normally this costs about, you know, we have is, is the statement of this will cost less than if we have to dig up the pipe. Yep, it probably will, uh, but, you know, this is the only bidder. Is it a fair price, is it a good price, is it a cheap price? I don't know.
Well, this is what, I mean, Justin, Justin Gove has written a, a sort of lengthy memo. It says, "The twenty-twenty-five Sewer Lining Service Project was publicly bid with bids open on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. A single bid was received from Vortex Services. The unit pricing included in Vortex's bid was significantly less than we've seen for similar projects over the last several years. Further, Vortex has done a significant amount of work in Camden. We have always been pleased with the quality of the work. As such, we recommend awarding the project to Vortex despite being the only bid received."
So we've got a motion and a second. Any further?
And we don't have a map, is, that's a good point, we don't have a map where this is. I wish we had more information before we go spend four, five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. I know it's a bond and all that, but that's me, I'm only one vote.
Well, I think that they have gone through that process extensively and that.
We have no evidence of that.
Well, we have a memo from Justin Gove, who's a licensed
Engineer.
engineer in charge of overseeing all of the assessment of our system. And so.
And I think the fact that we have history with this company provides.
I mean, we really want to move forward with some of this, there was, the bond was approved overwhelmingly. There's urgency in, in determining how much of the I and I can be eliminated through the lining process, because we're gonna see after these big sections are lined, how, how much of a reduction there is. And then we're gonna know, okay, this whole section was, was lined, we're gonna know that the problem is coming from laterals or different places, but they've, they've chosen some high problem areas, you know, Washington Street. We have, um, people's houses overflowing with sewage. And so it'll be good to see if lining this stuff makes a big difference in that area and, you know, how much we're gonna have to, um, pursue other things. So I, I do think there is a certain amount of flexibility that has to happen when they're doing this amount of work, because, and the, you know, there isn't gonna be another alternative. Vortex is.
Well, the other alternative is digging them up and replacing them for much more.
And there's no way.
Oh, well, yeah, you wouldn't.
Yeah.
And not just much more money, much more intrusive, much more time, much more, all kinds of things.
Yeah.
Well, there, I mean, I think that the alternative would be trying to find somebody else to do the line. But there's a reason that we brought in Vortex to do things before when even like our other hydrovacu-
Yeah, and I mean, and there's, there's plenty of circumstances where we've put a bid out, we've received one bid, and we didn't accept it, and we waited and put it out again. And this is just not one of those circumstances, because they gave us a good price and.
But it's a good point on future projects that are over half a million dollars, that we get a little more documentation and perhaps one of the engineers here to, to, uh, answer our questions.
Yeah. Yeah. I wish I'd asked, I wish I'd noticed earlier that, just asked for a few more things in the packet, because I assume they have a extensive bid package that, yeah, is provided.
Sure. Are we prepared to go ahead with a vote? We've got a motion and a second, we've had some discussion. All those in favor?
Trenchless sewer line replacement usually costs between nineteen hundred dollars to six thousand dollars. That's kind of interesting, by mile. But maybe, maybe this is different, maybe they're doing a lot. Just curious.
All those in favor? Four, zero, one.
Opposed.
Opposed. Four in favor, one opposed, so the motion carries. Okay, the last item is adjournment.
Have moved to go into executive session?
Yes, under MRS four oh five, six E, consultation with town attorney in executive session.
Is that a, did you move and I seconded, or, or am I making, I'll make that motion.
Do, do we adjourn first? We adjourn.
Do either one.
And then, okay. You can make.
I move that we, uh, enter executive session pursuant to the, um, to what Susan said.
Right. Do we need a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. We are now in executive session.